Okay, I will call to order the January thirteenth Regular Meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I would ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. And at this time, would everyone please rise as Lilly Halter leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, everyone. First item is the adoption of the agenda. You have the most recent agendas in front of you with any new changes highlighted in orange. With those changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
They moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Moving into dates to remember. Today, January thirteenth is the Winter Carnival from five to six thirty at the high school. January twentieth, Martin Luther King Holiday, no school that day. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on January twenty-seventh, five thirty in the IPC. January thirty-first is the earliest date to begin circulating or file nomination petitions for school board election. February fifth is an early release day. February tenth, Board of Education meeting at five thirty in the IPC. February seventeenth, President's Day, no school that day. February twenty-fourth, Board of Education meeting at five thirty in the IPC. February twenty-eighth, five PM is the deadline for filing nominating petitions for school board election. And April eighth is the school board election. Those are our dates to remember. Moving into community input for items not on the agenda. We haven't had any requests for community input. We also have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. So we will move into the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of the following. Approval and/or corrections of minutes of previous meetings. Approval and/or corrections of the financial report. Consideration and approval of the bills. New hires, we have sixteen new hires to our district that require board approval to be covered by our Workman's Compensation Plan. We have four resignations for board approval. We have Ann Fenske, Administrative Assistant at the Transportation, fifteen-year service. This will be effective July fifteenth. Ginger Brake, food service at Madison, nineteen-year service, effective at the end of the school year. Janet Schinderling, teacher with eleven-year service at the end of this school year. Lacey Culpepper, Sped Para Educator with five months of service. We have three contracts requiring board approval. Corey Anderson, teacher at the high school for CTE Auto and Diesel Technology. Joshua Starnes, teacher at the high school, CTE Manufacturing Instructor, Welding, Machine Tool Technology. Macy Sternhagen, teacher at McKinley for the second semester. We need to set the 2025 Combined City School Election Date of April eighth. We have the Combined Election Agreement with the city of Huron in your board packet. Award school bid to Harlow's Bus in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. We have several grant applications. We have Destination Imagination applying for a United Way Grant of three thousand dollars for youth STEM-based activity. Destination Imagination is also applying to the Huron Youth Leadership, seven hundred and fifty dollars for youth STEM-based activity. Destination Imagination applying from the Huron Community Foundation for three thousand dollars for youth STEM-based activity. And we have Jolene Knitschney applying for an ELA South Dakota Grant from the South Dakota Department of Ed up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for four years for elevating literacy across South Dakota and improving literacy outcomes for K-12 students. That is our consent agenda in its entirety. We can pass it with one motion, or if any board member would like to pull any item out for further discussion, we certainly can do that.
Move to approve consent as presented?
They moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now we'll turn to Dr. Steinhoff as he celebrates the successes in our district.
Thank you Chairman Van Berkom. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations this evening goes to Tahaa Sa and Ahmet for being selected to play in the Senior All-Star Soccer Game in Sioux Falls in February. Congratulations to Lisa Bishop, Washington Para, on the birth of her granddaughter Amelia Grace. And Amelia was born on December nineteenth. Congratulations to Heather DeBoer, our Principal of Buchanan K-1, for recently earning her doctoral degree. And congratulations to eighth grader Ira Sarvis for being accepted to the South Dakota Middle School All-State Jazz Band. He plays the vibraphone, and the concert will be February first in Mitchell. I have a wide number of thank yous this evening. Thank you to Ray Garrett, Tim Shelley, and Craig in observation of January being School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you to Gary Zell for providing oranges for the Washington Four Five Students snack time. Thank you to Prairie Bible Church for the monetary donation for warm winter gear for the students at Washington Four Five Center. Thank you to Teresa Nelson for the donation of winter coats, snow pants, and hats for the Buchanan K-1 Center students. Thank you to the Huron High School Student Council for visiting Buchanan K-1 Center on Friendly Friday. Thank you to Bergman Arena and staff for hosting the middle school students for skating parties this holiday season. Thank you to the Huron Area Education Federal Credit Union for the lifesaver treats. Thank you to the First Presbyterian Church for their donation of hats, gloves, and blankets for the students at Madison Two Three, Buchanan K-1, and Washington Four Five. Thank you to Hope Lutheran Church for their donation of gloves to Buchanan K-1 and Washington Four Five. Thank you to Barb Hublitz for the donation of snow boots to Buchanan K-1. Thank you to Modern Women of America, Sarah May, and the Huron Community for the donations to the schools' nurses' offices at Buchanan K-1, Madison Two Three, Washington Four Five, the middle and high school. Thank you to the Huron High School Girls Basketball Team for visiting Buchanan on Friendly Friday. Thank you to Dakota Land Financial Services for the donation to the Special Olympics team. Thank you to Modern Women, Hearst Corner, the family of Clyde Dillman, and several other anonymous donations for their assistance in helping with negative meal accounts. And thank you to Hope Lutheran for the donation of mittens and hats for McKinley Learning Center. And this concludes our celebrations this evening in the district.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to add one more thank you to the Washington Four Five Center for the treats that they brought to the board members this evening. Moving into board reports. Our first is the high school student report, so I will turn it to Lilly Halter for this report.
This month, we have Hannah Schoenfelder, who's a senior, come to talk about FFA.
Hi, everybody. Just a little bit that just happened in our FFA chapter. This last October, we recently had a couple teams and individuals compete in LDEs, Leadership Development Events. Previously, with Postma as our chapter leader, we never did these. And so with the new leadership in Ms. Gents, this has been something new that we've started doing. And I am super happy to say that a lot of our participants were freshmen and sophomores, bringing in some new blood. We had one team go to state this year, and they placed decently well, especially for their first time ever competing in this. So we were super happy to see that. As of right now, we are working on our seniors getting their state degrees. We're applying, and they will be in by January twenty-ninth. Previously, I believe Postma did most of the applications for the previous seniors. And so this year, we have actually, Gents is going to help the seniors get started. And we are all using a new website that I have never used personally. But everyone is going to be signed in. It's AET, so that's something new as well. And then now we started signing up for our CDEs, Career Development Events, and those will be starting up here in March. So that's all we have.
Any questions from anyone?
Just excited to see the program continue to grow. So thank you for being a part of it, and thanks for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next report will be from the Greater Huron Development Corporation. We have Mr. Ted Hader here to speak.
Right. Thank you, board members and administrators, for having me tonight. Ted Hader with the Greater Huron Development Corporation. Here with a proposal for the career and tech ed houses that are built by your students every year to enter into a three-year pilot program with the Greater Huron Development Corporation. I've got just a quick outline of the who, what, where, when, why, and how. The who will be the Huron School District and the CTE Program in Greater Huron. Huron School District CTE Program building the houses. Greater Huron providing financing, design, site work, marketing, and the sale of those houses. The what, again, is a three-year pilot program. Three years matches the existing contract with Builders First Source for the materials and support of the CTE Program. On the bottom there are bids from the previous years for those houses and what those amounted to. It averaged a five-year average of five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We are proposing in year one that Greater Huron pays a flat fee to the school district of six thousand dollars plus ten percent of the profits from the sale of the house. And in the years two and three, we increase that amount by three percent as a built-in escalation for increasing costs. Ten percent of the profits remaining constant. The where, if you look at the map here, you see the site location. Where is this in the city of Huron? This is directly north of the postal sorting facility and to the west of Peaceful Pines. And there you see the layout of the new cul-de-sac that is currently under construction called Dogleg Court. I don't have a specific lot in mind for the first house, but we would intend to build houses out there until this development is full, at which point we would look at our lots in South Town near the Coburns area for the next phase. When, three years, starting the following year. The current year is already under contract. Why, there's a couple of reasons up there. This year's house and last year's house both left town. Nothing wrong with that. However, gives me a little bit of heartburn knowing that we're losing out on property taxes in the community and housing expansion opportunity in the city of Huron. One of our focus areas is housing development. So this would fit into our company, the Greater Huron Development Corporation's mission. And I'll show you a couple of examples on the next slide of houses that were built by the CTE kids that are in the city limits of Huron, with the exception of that top-left one, which is just outside the city limits east of the golf course. The numbers you see in the middle ranging from two thousand to thirty-seven hundred dollars represent the school district's share of property taxes from the houses we looked at that were built by the CTE kids. Property taxes going on in perpetuity to the district. And again, the houses that left town, we're missing out on those for future revenue. The how, again, Greater Huron providing the work, working with the CTE Program to choose a lot in Dogleg Court and to lay out a house, garage, and all of the landscaping needed to fit on that lot. Again, the CTE Program builds the house. We provide all of the financing, and then we are also responsible for the sale. Questions?
I just think this is exciting, Ted. This is really great to see. I mean, I remember years when we struggled to find any bidder for our CTE house. So I see this as a win-win for both entities, for city and the school district. So this is, I love it.
I hope so. I hope it works very well. We put a three-year pilot program in if we need to tweak something in a couple of years. If either entity happens to run out of, if the school can't build a house, if we sell all of our lots, we intend to just be able to put into words in an agreement that we are able to walk away from each other if we need to.
It would be a good problem for you to have to sell all the lots.
Wonderful problem for us to have, yes.
Any other questions for Ted?
Do you see still using Builders First Choice for all the materials in?
Not only, yes, honoring that commitment for the next three years, but also using local subs for everything that we can use local subs for. Concrete, plumbing, electrical work, dirt work, sprinkler system, sidewalk, everything else, yes.
I have a question for the district. How long does it take to build a house and get it moved on-site? Is it in one school year?
They build, they build a house each school year, yep.
And would they be building on-site here or on-site where the property's at?
They'll still build it on-site indoors.
Okay.
Yep.
One of the expenses we would have then is moving it from the CTE facility to the ultimate location.
Yeah, it's not very often we get to work on something that helps everybody. So, or helps at least for sure the community and the school district. So, yeah, great idea.
My final thing is, this is a report tonight. We'll have it on new business on the twenty-seventh, and I'll be recommending approval for that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Ted.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep, thanks for having me.
Yeah, our next report will be the good news report from Mrs. Knitschney on CTE.
Thank you for having me this evening. It's exciting, a lot of things going on in CTE. We heard the FFA report. We have the two hires for next year, which is really exciting. They're working, they're from industry and working on their certification as we speak. So that is exciting. In December, our careers class had the opportunity, under the direction of Mrs. Fitz, along with myself, to go out into the community and spend that early release day shadowing a career that they hope to follow. So I have with me this evening, Blute. She's a senior at the high school. I'm gonna let her talk about her experience and anything that she learned or would change.
Hi. So first of all, I just wanted to say that I'm really honored and excited to be here. And then second, I just wanted to thank everyone who is involved in giving me the opportunity to go and job shadow through the career exploration class that I took last fall. So basically, all of us got to decide on places and companies that we would like to go and job shadow at. And I chose to go to Dakota Land Credit Union. And there, they had me go on their work schedule, basically. And I met a whole bunch of different employees that taught me what they were doing and then what kind of work and how they did it. And it was very interesting, and they were very welcoming, and I enjoyed the experience very much. So thank you.
When I went around and took pictures, and if you go back to the school district website on December eleventh, there's tons of pictures of every student at their job site. But she was on second floor, and I don't even know what division, and maybe insurance. And I asked if it was something that she was enjoying. She goes, I'm even more excited now to go into finance and business than I was when I walked in the door this morning. So I'm assuming that you'll be pursuing a degree. Can you tell us a little bit about your post-graduation plans?
Yes, I am thinking of actually double majoring in business administration and musical arts. And then pause. I think I want to come back here and work at Dakota Credit Union for a while to help my community, so, yeah.
Other students that were unable to come tonight due to all of the different activities, we'll watch a little video. Hopefully, we'll be able to hear.
Hi, my name is Kimber Siren. I had the opportunity to job shadow at Dakota Family Dentistry. While I was there, I got to experience a wisdom tooth removal, filling a cramping wound, and two dental cleanings. This has helped me for my future by solidifying my decision to go into dental hygiene.
Hi, I'm Alicia Happy, and I'm a senior in high school. And I got the opportunity to go job shadow at the Madison School. I got to job shadow Miss Christians in very good class, which I was excited for because my little brother wasn't there. Probably was in boarding me. I was excited for how it was being a teacher. And I definitely got the experience. I got to experience that with Miss Christians in class. And that was prior to me figuring my teaching in the U because I felt that I really knew from working with the kids and teaching, teaching them how to do this and that. And I think kids in high school should really take career exploration classes if they want to try to find what kind of careers they're going to do. I know.
Hi, my name is Miranda Reynolds-Martin, and I got the opportunity to job shadow at the HR two divisions public. All of that I got to experience, the measures they were interested to check upon their features, such as checking their height, their weight, and their blood pressure. I also got to experience a little girl getting her tongue shot, which was pretty interesting. This has helped me for my future by giving me a better realization on the positions of work and what they do every day and how they help their patients. Thank you.
These are all of the community partners. And I am very proud to say that every contact that I made with a student that was interested in a career, the answer was never no. They had open arms, whether it worked that day or not. So you heard Merle Norman. We had Double A Motorsports, Huron Vet Hospital, Dakota Land.
Any questions for either one? Okay, thank you very much. Very good report.
Okay, our next report will be my land report. The legislative session begins at noon tomorrow with the Governor's State of the State address. There's already been several pieces of legislation that have been filed already even before the session started that I thought I'd bring to the board's attention. Since we all know that the biggest thing this year is going to be vouchers, I'm going to start with two voucher bills, and I would encourage everyone here to read through these two at some point, but I'm going to try and touch on some of them, some of the highlights anyways, but I'll start with House Bill ten thousand nine. This one calls the Educational Empowerment Credits. Talks about, if you want to get one of these, there'll be a form that the Department of Ed must make available on their website, you fill it in, and any monies would be deposited into the students' accounts, it could be used for things like tuition, fees for sports programs, fine arts, textbooks, educational therapies, registration fees, transportation, technological devices. And the funding must be budgeted and expended through the General Appropriation Fund. If parent elects to utilize it in the second year, they must notify the DOE by completing a renewal form. If you fail to return a renewal form, the Department of Ed must provide a reminder notice. If any goods purchased with money from a student's educational empowerment account or returned for a refund, it gets transferred back to the state. The only accountability I can see in this one, it says Department of Ed shall conduct random audits of empowerment accounts to ensure compliance, and anybody convicted in the court of law for fraud may not participate in the program in the future. I don't really see any other accountability standards in this one. Nothing in this act authorizes DOE or any school district to exercise any additional control or supervision on anyone that's in this program, so I don't really see a lot of controls in that one. The other one is House Bill ten twenty, they call this one Education Savings Accounts. This one had a lot of similar things, it talks about DOE shall consider each application, the orders received, and if they get more applications than money available, then they'll have to start means testing, it has that in here too. Talks about depositing money into an educational service account that would be equal to forty percent of the per-student equivalent. The other bill didn't really have an amount in there that I saw unless I missed it. Any monies that remain unexpended at the end of June would revert back to the state. And again, it talks about DOE conducting random compliance audits to look for fraud, don't know what that means. There's a lot of DOE must promulgate rules for applying, establish process, how they evaluate process by which they must, they can terminate an education savings account. Again, nothing in this act limits independence or autonomy of the qualifying school, they still get all the freedoms and flexibilities they currently have. Nothing in this act requires a qualifying school to alter its admission policies, beliefs, creed, curriculum, employment practices, or any other practice. Basically leaves them alone, they don't have to meet the same accountability standards that we do. So again, I'd encourage you guys to read ten oh nine and ten twenty. Couple of other things that caught my attention, House Bill ten nineteen is the Representative Van Heisen bill on cutting property taxes on owner-occupied properties which could have an effect on school funding in the future. House Bill ten thirty-nine was one I saw that currently, right now, if there's a school counselor that gets their National Board Certification, they can be reimbursed for those expenses, that goes away under this, that's being withdrawn, and he's funding for that. House Bill ten forty I saw has to do with dual credits. Right now, if a student wants to take dual credits, they have to pay for a third of it, well, that would go to fifty percent from a third. One that doesn't really apply to us, but just kind of piqued my interest, was House Bill ten seventeen. It would require school district events to accept cash for admission, and also have at least one concession area that accepts cash. This is being sponsored by a representative from Minnehaha County, so I guess he has a school district where they're not taking cash and people don't like it. What else do I have? Oh, I had a, what was that?
She calls on to all credit card interests.
That might get undone under this bill. Two Senate bills. Senate Bill fifty-five is the General Appropriations Bill, that's where all the final numbers are going to get plugged into at some point, I'm not going to touch on that right now, it's got the governor's proposed numbers in there right now, but that's definitely subject to change. And then there's a Senate Bill fifty-one would require every classroom to have the Ten Commandments posted at our expense, so that one's out there too, that's sponsored by a senator from Mead County. That's actually quite a few bills before the session even started, I know this is only going to get to be a lot longer list, but are there any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, well then that's all I have for tonight, and I'm sure in two weeks it'll be a lot more intense. So thank you, everyone. Now we will turn to Mr. Christopherson for his Business Manager's Report.
First item on my report tonight's the General Fund Report. We are halfway through this budget year at the end of December, so to date, we have collected twelve million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, or forty-six percent of the budget. Last year at this time, we'd collected twelve million, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, or forty-six percent of that budget. So far this year, we've expended twelve million, one hundred and three thousand dollars, or forty-three percent of budget expenditures as compared to eleven million, eighty-nine thousand dollars, or forty-one percent for the same period last year. I also have a construction update on the, mainly on the addition to the high school. Since last month, the work on the addition has progressed with dirt work and getting the foundations in place. Once the foundations are all in place, the next thing scheduled to happen will be the pre-cast concrete walls that'll begin in mid-March. And on the scoreboard project, we continue to work with architects, engineers, and Daktronics to get this completed. Their immediate goal is to get the center-hung scoreboard in place yet this month. That's my report.
How long does that take to hang that? Get the old one down and the new one?
They want a four-day window.
A four-day window, okay.
And that's over a weekend, so it's minimal.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Christopherson? All right, thank you, sir. Now I will turn to Dr. Steinhoff for his Superintendent's Report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The administrative team and our school resource officers will again collaborate with Brett Garland and the South Dakota School Safety Program. We completed the training for Level One of the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, short, we call it C-STAG, and we did that this fall. Brett informed me there will be multiple opportunities throughout the second half of the year for us to have Level Two C-STAG as we continue our focus on improving safety. As Mr. Christopherson mentioned about the scoreboards, additionally, Mike Dramstedt, Scott DeBoer, and I continue to work with Daktronics on advertising partnerships with area businesses. We've met twice and established new levels of advertisement partnerships, and due to the increased opportunities to showcase businesses through video and advertising, we anticipate a substantial increase in revenue for the Huron School District. As of today, we're planning to host a demonstration in April to reveal the equipment capabilities and the updated advertising levels. And then my last piece this evening is my public stance on school vouchers in South Dakota. And we heard more about the school vouchers in the two bills that are already out there, so what I'm going to read to you is two sections out of this public stance that I put together. So the date is the thirteenth today, and it's titled Public Stance on School Vouchers in South Dakota. The definition from Oxford Languages of a school voucher states, "A government-funded voucher redeemable for tuition fees at a school other than the public school that a student could attend free. My public school experience began in the fall of nineteen eighty-six when I attended an elementary school in Clark, South Dakota. My parents were educators, my mother was an elementary school teacher, and my father began as a teacher and coach and later became a principal and superintendent. Being a second-generation educator and superintendent, I have witnessed the importance of public education and understand the struggles and achievements we face in preparing students to reach their full potential by graduation. I stand in opposition to school vouchers unless the same accountability and reporting are required from those receiving the voucher. As a South Dakota superintendent, the following are items of accountability and data reporting required annually." I'm not going to read all those, but there are sixteen bullet points that I have to sign off of every single year as a superintendent as part of accountability and reporting to the Department of Ed. And in closing, what I mentioned here is additionally, public schools' growth and measurement are documented and made public annually. The students must take the state assessments for specified grade levels, the teachers teach the approved state content standards. We don't get the option to deny public school enrollments and must accept all children and provide for their educational needs. Private schools and alternative instruction, also known as homeschooling, are essential options for families to choose the best fit in education for their children. However, accountability and reporting must follow the school voucher." And then I have it signed there. So that concludes my report this evening, back to you, Chairman Van Berckel.
Any questions for Dr. Steinhoff? I completely agree with you on that. Very valid point, we have those accountability standards to meet and to accept public money, I think everyone else should too then. Okay, moving into old business. First item of old business, Policy JFABE, Huron School District McKinney-Vento Dispute Resolution Process. This is going to serve as our first reading. Don't believe there's been any changes since introduction. Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, be on the next agenda. Next item, calendar for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. This is going to serve as our first reading, coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative One, Student Achievement. Any comments from anyone? If not, you've got two weeks to digest this, and it'll be on our next agenda for second reading and approval. Okay, moving into policy GCDB, Criminal Background Checks. First reading, goes along with Strategic Plan Initiative Five, Learning Environment. There's been no changes to this one since its introduction. Unless there's any questions or comments from anyone, this will be on the next agenda for second reading and approval, unless there's any comments or questions from anyone. Okay, be on the next agenda. Next item, calendar for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. This is going to serve as our first reading, coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative One, Student Achievement. Any comments from anyone? If not, you've got two weeks to digest this, and it'll be on our next agenda for second reading and approval. Okay, moving into Policy GCDV, Criminal Background Checks. First reading, goes along with Strategic Plan Initiative Five, Learning Environment. There's been no changes to this one since its introduction. Unless there's any questions or comments from anyone, this will be on the next agenda for second reading and approval. Okay, moving into Section C, General School Administration. We've got second reading on a lot of policies here that go along with Strategic Plan Initiative Three, Community Outreach and Communication. Can we take these all in one motion, or do I have to do each one separately?
I think you can do an all-in-one motion, unless somebody wants to pull one out.
I'm going to ask that, does any, there's been no changes to any of these since our first reading on all these Section C policies, unless anybody wants to pull one out for, one or more out for individual discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the Section C policies.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Section C policies. Is there any discussion or comments from anyone? Been on the last couple of agendas, so seeing no further discussion, we'll vote, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Takes care of old business, moving into new business. First item of new business is the Business Manager Contract Approval for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year. I would entertain a motion to approve the Business Manager's Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Anybody have any comments? The dollar amounts will be filled in once we know how the legislative session goes.
I'd just say that we appreciate you Kelly, appreciate what you do and...
Absolutely.
Kind of our general policy, our practice that we do at every meeting, the first meeting in January, our business manager and superintendent, and glad we're keeping with that practice.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you as well, being a newcomer, you've been very, very helpful and willing to share and answer all questions, and I appreciate that.
He's always got the answers too.
Yeah.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we will vote on the Business Manager's Contract. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is the Superintendent Contract Approval for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. And again, we'll fill in the final dollar amounts once we know what they are. I would entertain a motion to approve the Superintendent Contract.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any comments or discussion on this?
Say the same thing, we appreciate you and look forward to the next, I guess, three years, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, seeing no further discussion, we will vote, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, contract approved. Next item is the Governing Board Annual Review Questionnaire for Tax Exempt Bond Post-Issuance Compliance General, something we do once a year. I would entertain a motion to approve the questionnaire.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kelly, you want to comment on this, especially for the benefit of Ray?
Sure. Each time that we issue capital A certificates, it comes with requirements that we have to continue to make disclosures while we still make, excuse me, payments on those capital A certificates, so this item and the next item, they actually go together because they're slightly different questions on whether it's a tax-exempt bond or a tax-advantaged bond, and we have both kinds in the general obligation bonds, half of those bonds are tax-exempt and half of them are tax-advantaged. It was just the financial climate at the time. We were refinancing that debt and Colliers, Tom Grimmon that was here in October, he walked us through the, the most advantaged way to reissue that debt. That's why we have two kinds of bonds. And most of this post-issuance compliance involves me logging onto a website and uploading our audit. We upload our budget. And then there's about a ten-page report that I do of other financial indicators for the district. And we upload that and it posts it out there for all the investors to see if they ever have a question. So that's what this is about.
Any further discussion or comments or questions on this one? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on Governing Board Annual Review Questionnaire for Tax Exempt Post-Issuance Compliance. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Next, we have the Governing Board Annual Review Questionnaire for Tax Advantage Bond Post-Issuance Compliance General. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Next item, we have a JLG Proposal for Architectural Services for the Scoreboards at the Arena and Tiger Stadium in the amount of $25,440. Kelly, you have comments on this one?
This one is to get the architects and engineers involved with Daktronics, architects and engineers that have drawn this together for us so that we're in compliance with state law. There's a state law that says a company like Daktronics can't be the engineer on their own project. Even though they kind of are, they've drawn up all the plans. So what will happen is JLG will look at those plans, add to it, sign off on it, mainly they're signing off on it. And another thing that we're getting from JLG will be a structural engineer that will look at the hoist on the center-hung scoreboard and tell us if the, the existing hoist and the way it is mounted up there is sufficient for the new center-hung board. The new center-hung board, I understand, is about 600 pounds heavier than what's up there right now. So we need to get that checked out. It could also be that there have been updates to codes or requirements since that one was installed 20 years ago. So we want to make sure we're up to speed with what is holding all that weight above the floor.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. I would entertain a motion to approve the JLG proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll open it up to discussion or questions or comments from anyone. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the JLG Proposal for Architectural Services for the scoreboard at the Arena and Tiger Stadium, $25,440. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Final item of new business, similar item, JLG Proposal for Architectural Services for the High School Kitchen and CTE Welding Ventilation for $38,500. Assume this is a similar type thing, Kelly?
Very similar thing. We thought we could do that high school kitchen, just working directly with the vendors. And we found out that we probably can't. It's a little bit more complicated than initially thought because of the other commercial kitchen that's being installed in the high school, in the fax room. With two commercial kitchens running with, both with commercial exhaust hoods, we need to add some units on the roof for makeup air. Otherwise, we would be exhausting more than we were taking in and basically we would suck the doors shut and make them hard to open. So we need a makeup air unit over the high school kitchen to go along with the new exhaust hood. And then the second part of that kind of caught me by surprise when they threw in a $9,600 for a CTE welding ventilation. We already have all the plans and all the design and have bid out the CTE welding ventilation project. It seems that the engineers neglected to include their design costs into the initial proposal and this is allowing them to correct that error.
Fixing that. Okay, fixing that oversight.
They've already provided the plans.
Okay. All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the JLG Proposal for Architectural Services at the High School Kitchen and CTE Welding.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions or comments from any board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. That completes our new business. We have one more item, an executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, subsection 4, Preparing for Contract Negotiations. I would, and there'll be no action taken afterwards. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for that item.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a short recess and reconvene in executive session.